A little bit different than years past. If you've been here in years past, we'll go through the slides at intervals. I will stop. You can ask questions rather than wait till the end and you ask all the questions at the end or you may forget. This way, when it's over, it's over and we can move on for the evening. So. As you've probably already heard or read through Connecticut Post or if you were at the board meeting a few weeks ago, this was our initial ask for the 2021 budget. This is a 2.78 request of the city, $7 million, and a 2.98 request of the state, which is a 5.76 ask in total. Now, some of you say, well, that's a pretty big ask. As we go through the budget presentation, you will see if you average this out with the last five years, this is a municipal ask compared to other districts. Get between 2 to 3.5% in. Well, at a recent board meeting, the total request was increased by $50 million to the state. As I mentioned in the last one last week, I had not anticipated the state to provide us with that additional $50 million. However, it included, so that would be a total increase of our budget, 25.4%, as I've heard of. And this is a 19.55% decrease because the state asked, which again, is probably not going to be where this is coming from. It's a great place to start again. So we're going to go through part one. This is the fiscal framework, goals and challenges that our district faces. So right now, as of, our enrollment has a total of 2019. That is the enrollment that is projected and looked at by the state. Our enrollment at that date was 20,103, which is a decrease by 134 students from last year. However, since that date, our enrollment has decreased by over 400 students. Most of those students are English language learners that have come from Central and South America. So that number is significant because as we all know, those students come here with high needs and services that we must provide to those needs. So our increase is probably close, brings us close to last year's projected goal. As you can see, and I will just point it here, as of that date, our increase in special ed students from 2018, October 1st, went from 3,347 students to 3520. So the increase was a little over 1% or 173 students. Our L population on that date was a decrease from 3,614 to 4,031. As of last week, we are up almost at 4,300 students. So the increase is probably about 700 students in the course of 12 months. Our net current expenditures per pupil compared to sensible. Bridgeport, we spent $14,697 per student as of October 2019. As it misses, there is Hartford, which is over $5,000 more per student. New Haven, which is a little under $4,000 per student. Waterbury, $16,000, which is about $1,500 more per student. And Stanford, which is not quite in our district, obviously Stanford, but they do spend that $19,000 to 25.71. Bridgeport ranks 157 out of 166 in elementary school business. Any questions? I think that's pretty straightforward. Our goals is obviously to have a structurally balanced budget. We have a somewhat school-based budgeting model. There's a formula that our CFO, in conjunction with myself, in order to provide resources and tools, we can come up with. There is fiscal accountability. Any of our administrators will tell you. There is many layers in purchasing within the Board of Ed, outside of the Board of Ed, merchant at city purchasing policies and you have comprehensive fiscal management. Our school-based budgeting model is based on school allocation positions. So based on the number of students, number of teacher and parent and administrative positions are allocated per school. The formula is slightly different for high schools based on the needs and the requirements of providing comprehensive high school programs for our parents. We have an operating allocation per school of $20 per student. Who has to be appointed, especially every volunteer, part-time personnel, interventionists, tutors, and sometimes dependent on the student, the school needs, attendants, intervention personnel as well, usually paid for after the grant. Each teacher is given $30 for his payroll in October. Obviously, that's not a lot of money for those of you that are teachers here in the room using your classes, but it is something. And through our parent involvement, Title I, each school receives $7.20 per student to spend, elementary, army, Title I, high schools, state, primary. That is our school-based budgeting model. Question. Fiscal challenges. Obviously, every year, as you own your homes, utility costs decrease. You have our significant special ed and L populations, and those services are constantly rising. We're trying to balance that with providing high-level, high-quality services to most students. We have legal services, which we have a law firm that represents the public education that we consult, utilizing matters of litigation and contract negotiations. We have cover absences for teachers. Trying to monitor and do the best we can this year, we monitor teacher absences along with that, which is going to be a problem cost. Health and care benefits, a large part, we consider the side of the district and of course transportation and schools. Also, this incorporate special ed transportation, we have significant costs made to students throughout the district. Questions? Yes, sir. So the question is, if the $7.20 per student is not spent by the schools, does that money go back to the state or does that money get carried over into the next year? And obviously, if it doesn't get spent, it gets given back. You never want to give any funds back.
How do you know that the PAC and PCS presidents are well organized and utilize these funds properly?
Request for that money to be spent get entered into computerized system and they are reviewed and approved by the principal and also folks in the grants department. And they need to meet the expenditure guidelines that are set for by Title I and private. Current, correct. The parent leader, in conjunction with the principal, enter into the form stack system, the requests for funds and have to outline what those funds are for and how they are directly related to the parent involvement plan of the school. They are monitored not only by the district, but they are also monitored by the Students and Families Committee of the Board of Education. So the 1920 budget, this is an overview of spending for the district. The operating budget is $251,880,000. This is made up of the city share, which is 26.5% of that, which is $66,796,31. That was an additional $1.3 million of the prior year. The remaining 73.5% of the operating budget comes from the state of Connecticut, and that was an additional 0.63, a little over $1 million. There's also $30 million, $30.4 million in grants, which federal grants, which increased Title I by 120,000, and state grants, priority increased by a little over $22,000, but we lost 536,200 of that. Majority of this money right here is lost on Fairchild Wheeler enrollment, combining So this is an overview of our budget gap plan that was implemented for 1920. As a result, we have, as part of this, we lost two administrators at district office, clericals at district office, their PM services at the district office, some staffing, one ISS officer that was restored at Harding High School in the creation of a new targeted group program, school staff, we lost two clericals at Bassett, 75, we lost a clerical at Harding. It was really two and one was restored. So we ended up with five at Harding. One at Fairchild Wheeler, assistant principal at Fairchild Wheeler, we have two security vacancies right now, and we have some guards in recovery positions. We have summer school, high school, grand recovery, the increase from last year, $150,200 of course, which increased our intake of a little over $12,000. We have redeployment from the Bridgeport Learning Center of three TSX to schools in other locations, we removed 3K that was under enrolled. We have assistant principal conversion that was lost in the last season. We're trying to maintain accountability and guidelines for special education that hope to realize about half a million in savings. We have some redeployment of reserve special education classes throughout the district. So this is the budget plan that we implemented for 1920. Any questions on this? I'm sure there's some folks that may have. This is the big one here, obviously, the budget gap history. This is why it's significant to notice, why the increase of a little over 5% this year. 2016, '17, we got 47 kindergarten pairs from the budget, 26 home school coordinators, five math coaches, five guidance officers at the elementary level, school resource officers that were Board of Ed employed or lost, as you know, we are out involved with federal grant with police department, so we do have 12 SROs. We lost university interns, valuable source of future recruitment, and we lost two folks in facilities. For a total of 130 lines throughout the school system because obviously interns are not available. 2017, the literacy coaches were cut, cut the alternative program for error of passmanship, which resulted in six personality redeploy, three nurses, the four lead defendants, liaisons, three members of the parent center, folks in the family resource centers, we lost nine folks in those areas, one clerical, one guard position, four administrators in ECAS, five members of the facilities department, two part-time folks at district office, four full-time folks. 18, 19, cut the remaining amount of literacy coaches, one and final defendants liaison, which you could imagine the district focus at that point is a very little impact at that point. We reduced in-school suspension by two, remaining parent center personnel was cut, three clericals, four more administrators, three in the facilities department, school care office, as we see Mr. Davies here this evening. Last year, four clericals, two guards, three more administrators, three more positions at central office. So all, all of this has been a loss over the last four years, 243 employees. As you can see, unsharred decline in the number of people lost. It's not a result of not having, you know, having enough money per set. That's because there's very little to come, but you know, there's a deficit which we're not sure where to go in order to close that. How some folks have said, you know, you're still running the school district, you've got 243 less employees, I've heard, those were 243 folks that you didn't need. Obviously, there is a consequence to these cuts. As I've mentioned, to the mayor and his upper-level staff, a lot of the violence you see on the streets here at Bridgeport are being committed by younger and younger folks. That is a direct result of loss of services. Any way you want to cut it, they are collateral damage of all these things. And significantly seeing more and more kids because of the lack of folks regarding more and more young kids in the elementary schools qualifying and needing summer enrichment and enhancement because teachers just are having a difficult time with that many kids and you need one person. Can't imagine what it would be like if you had, just think about five-year-olds, class of 24, and you're by yourself. Questions on this? We'll come back to this later because I just wanted to make a point. So we've cut over the last four years, $44.11 million from our budget. That is a reality. $16 million was the actual gap plan and a decrease in revenue of $1.1 million in 2016, '17. A net decrease in revenue in 17, '18 of almost $8 million, which equated to $11.25 million in losses. There was a slight increase in revenue in 18, '19 between the city's contribution and the state PCS, however, that was nearly, not nearly enough to cover the increases. And as you can see, we had a slight increase in revenue off 1920, but again, not enough to cover the costs of the new business here for the local schools. So that is our net loss over the last four years, $24 million. Any questions? So in that time, same, at same time, we requested in 15, '16, we were able to receive 2.45% increase in our budget. After that, as you can see, the last four years was a negative contribution to our budget, considering the growth of the budget, considering the money's received. There was less than a percentage point, almost nothing in 17, '18. It was a 1.36% increase in 18, '19, last year, 1.59% increase. But we've averaged 1% over the last five years. So as you can see, that 1% equates in the last five years, less than a half a percentage point, proportional to the state of Connecticut, and a little over a half a percent to the state. Unfortunately, the state of Connecticut does provide us with 70 to 75% of the budget. So until this portion here reaches where it needs to go, this isn't ever going to be a good one. So again, we had our enrollment numbers from the beginning. With an increase in enrollment of special education students every year, as we can see, our L student population is growing. The need for increases in state federal grants is not growing, the need for demand. So it is more and more imperative that the city and the state provide us what we need in order to provide education for students. So as of 1920, city provides 26% of the budget, state 73.5%. Not even close to what we're hoping for this year. We need to see this number grow to at least 29%, at least 29% in order for us to be able to maintain what we have now. That doesn't even begin to discuss bringing back some of the priorities, which would be kindergarten pares, coaches, the SBA, some administration that we have in the district. These are some of the ways we've tried to manage cost control. Our retransport contract has been regulated, they've been very cooperative, having minimal increases to the number of dollars on that we pay annually. They've also contributed and three cost trips within the Bridgeport local, which is 100 per year. We save some money by renegotiating our popular rent services. Health services is our substitute staffing service. They provide us with some relief as well. And our energy usage, we've checked about $400,000 in savings, but obviously $375,000 of savings. Questions? Yes, sir. Well, special education costs, obviously, depending on the services provided, fluctuate. The state has been very consistent in how they fund special education. So I don't see us receiving a whole lot more. There are some folks at the state during this legislative session that are introducing or possibly introducing some bills that could either help or hinder, we're not sure. There's a cooperative model that's been brought up in past sessions and I think is trying to be explored again this year where districts contribute almost like an insurance premium and then folks draw upon it based on the need. But I know there's a lot of resistance by our suburban towns because they feel as if they will contribute the bulk of the dollars and that the cities like Bridgeport, New Haven and Hartford will draw the most. The state contributes about $620 million to special ed, to the, all the towns and districts in the state. So that sounds like a big number, but when you look at, exactly, until they start taking some of the money and investing it in pre-intervention services, that number is just going to continue to grow because students are not receiving in the primary grades the level of support that they need, especially here in Bridgeport. How much of that is Bridgeport? You can go back to that slide. Well, the number, the question is, how much do they give to us? That's all based on the formula. So we have to spend over a certain amount of dollars per student in order to get the reimbursement. So. So this is our operating budget request. This obviously includes the $50 million that was added to the request at the Board of Education meeting. So we are requesting $7 million for the city of Bridgeport. As you can see, that is only, that's less than 3% of it. And when you average it out with the remaining, the last five years, where we've got less than 1/2%. I don't think that's an unrealistic number to ask for. The initial request of $7.5 million from the state is probably a realistic number. We'll quite get that, but I think it's a number that we can shoot for. Obviously, this number is something that if we are forever lucky enough to receive and restore all the positions that we've lost in the district over the last five years. We are hoping and anticipating stability in our federal and state grants. There could be a possibility in a reduction from what I'm reading in some of our grants here according to the Lambex article on the proposed governor's budget, but we're hoping that our delegation can help with their legislation later to make sure that at least 80. Yes, sir.
Of the disparities in spending for students in the city, is most of that due to the funding in the higher spending? Does the money come from the city or the state or the company?
Well, we are the second highest receiver of, so they're asking about state, state receives money. So we are the second highest receiving district in the state in terms of dollars. Hartford receives about $30 million more a year from the state of Connecticut, but the majority of it is because of the local funding. So in Hartford, they also receive $20 million more in local funding. Stanford doesn't receive nearly as much as we do. And state funding, it is all local. Waterbury does a much better job in local funding as well. They receive less, significantly less state funding. New Haven is the trick. We can't figure out, they've received less in state. On the books, they receive significantly less than we do from the city, but I think a lot of that could be directly paid services and in-kind services because there's no way that they have the per pupil expenditure that they do without factoring all that in. But that's not something that is known when you look at their public documentation. So I think a lot of that may be the city of New Haven picking up direct costs like nurses and things like that that we've asked for this year. Any other questions? Yes, sir. So here's why the ask, because some folks never understand or they think that there's this black hole that the money gets put into and we waste the money, well, we have to be a collective bargaining agreement. So this year, the teachers' contract went to arbitration, they were given an award. We feel it was a pretty fair award compared to our neighboring districts. Could it be better? Absolutely, absolutely. Our teachers work just as hard and not harder than many of our neighboring districts and do not ever reach the maximums that many of them do. Our administrators' union, they are getting a small increase, it's not all that significant. We don't have as many of those compared to Hartford, New Haven and Waterbury as well. So that is part of the other per pupil cost, the administrative cost. We have less than 90 administrators. Hartford has about 126, give or take. New Haven's well over 100 and actually Waterbury with significantly less students, has more Health insurance, we're projecting and we would vote to project about a 5% increase. We were told and sold us that this would not be the number behind the state plan. Fortunately, that number is increasing here after the year. Folks are not that number, it's not that high, but that's what we've been told by the state to figure in as an increase as a 5% million. MRF, that is the retirement contribution for our non-certified staff. That is going up over 2% this year. Other contracts as well, we mentioned age, which covers our security guards and a lot of our clerical, they got a 2% increase. I know it was dead 2%. We got 2% from our other supervisors, the non-certified, 2% for nurses and 2% for other grants. We do have a great We do have a grant that is, uh, inspired from two thousand and seventeen that has to do with our school resource officers. Year four of the grant, uh, we were in agreement that we would pay half the cost of the school resource officer, which is a full four hundred thousand dollars increase. Special education, we always escalate the cost by two million, it could be more, it could be less, um, very rarely is it less. Transportation, if we maintain the transportation that was implemented last year, uh, where the city paid directly to the transporter, that's a one point four million dollar cost plus the three hundred and fifty thousand, the increase in the percentage of the contract, about five percent. Prior to your surplus is at zero, so hopefully we can put that back, two million dollars, um, to be in our service model. If we did, uh, fill all our vacancies, which we want to make sure we have certified teacher and parent and all our classrooms, that would cost about two point four million. We have curriculum renewal that's coming up this year, a thousand, and we have, like, we keep a little in reserve, like potential shortfalls in our grants, which are a little bit around a thousand. Staff turn around, we anticipate on average about one point five million. There is the total of four point five million that we're asking from the state. That's fourteen, speaking fourteen, which is, uh, that is a success, which is increasing. Questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, so my mom, the freshman in Harding, and my daughter, fourth grader in Reed, um, the transition when they were going to, my son was going to high school, um, up to the last week, I was still waiting to get a notice like about busing, and I was in shock when I came to realize that Harding didn't have busing. So this is all new to me. I guess they've been without it for a while. So is there anything in the upcoming budget that's gonna provide busing for Harding students? Because, um, what I'm hearing is that it's like about over one point five miles that the students have to walk.
Two, two miles.
Two miles, okay, two miles.
Two miles for high schools.
And, um, the conditions of, as you know, that side of the district, especially the complaints, because I've been going to the pack meetings of parents, um, explaining like the females that have to walk in those, in, in the environment is not, let's say, the best, being harassed, even the boys. So is that something that the school's gonna? I drive my son every day, but looking at the conditions of the kids that they walk in and in the weather, it's kinda sad. So I'm just expressing my concern if that's gonna be something in the future that maybe they're gonna bring busing back to Harding.
Right now, there is no plan, and actually, if we do not receive the one point four million, uh, walking distance will increase to two and a quarter miles for high school students. Now, anything over that, students are to be provided a city bus pass at the high school level?
Which I've seen, but is that even something that's safe? And, I mean, as a parent, I don't know. I would not feel comfortable with my child having to walk in a dis-.
I don't disagree with you. I think transportation is a problem. I spoke to many students today at Harding High School, and they've expressed to me, I even have, uh, I took it out of my pocket, I kept it here. I had a student, a young man, senior at Harding, who Andres, I'll leave it at that, his name, who wrote me a nice paragraph explaining some of the challenges that many of his classmates face, including himself, and trying to get to Harding every day, so.
So is this something that needs to get to the state level and be addressed and heard? Or is this a city level?
Well, I think it's both. Uh, it's a city and a state issue, but I've been in constant turmoil trying to get a meeting with Governor Lamont in his office. I've been given the runaround several times. Um, so yesterday, someone from the commissioner's office reached out to me asking if we can set up a visit, um, in the next month with the governor coming to Harding for some sort of press release. So I said that would be great on the condition that he meets with me for thirty minutes prime. So I'm waiting to hear back if he is willing to do that because he has used Harding several times during this campaign and in his first year in office as kind of a backdrop to whatever he's trying to roll out. And I think it's important that if he's going to use Bridgeport as a way to stay popular within the state, that he at least produces something. Because obviously, if he plans on getting reelected, I think it's important that the people of Bridgeport understand that he has not fulfilled his commitments to the city that helped get him in office. Because if it wasn't for Bridgeport, uh, Bob Stepanowski would be at, in the governor's seat. So I think it's time that he at least has a conversation with the folks here because he has not been willing to do that, or I don't even know if he's even gotten the messages. But there's been several attempts through different avenues to get a meeting with him. I can tell you the commissioner of education is here to support him a little more, but I'm not sure how much influence he will have on funding. Yes, Ms. Ramos?
Yeah. Uh, ¿cuántos estudiantes tenemos en educación especial que están fuera de nuestro instituto? Porque nosotros no le podemos proveer los recursos para nuestras necesidades. ¿Y cuál sería el plan para volverlos a traer a nuestro instituto para que no nos coten?
There's a little over three hundred out of district placements currently. We've tried on several occasions on the ones that we know we can bring back and we can service them, not only equally, but most likely better than our out of district placements. But that is a process that takes time. Uh, parents have the right to refuse. Uh, we go through a process. So right now, we have brought a few back, um, and we've tried to limit the number going out so we maintain a steady number. A lot of districts, around three hundred and forty-three, given or taken. Uh, but we are looking to try to improve our services within district because I believe we can do a better job than these out of district. You know, they have nice facilities, they have these beautiful grounds, but they don't always have veteran structures. The problem is, you need a little bit of seed money in order to get a program started here in the district, whether that be a building. Uh, we've actually brought that back up to our delegation. There was talks a few years back when Mr. Vinowitz was superintendent about acquiring the Catholic Center on Jewett Avenue and incorporating a program there that may be able to draw out of districts from others, uh, towns surrounding us. But I think that might have been something that we missed the boat on. Um, CES is currently looking to find a building in Norwalk to do the same thing that we have been doing.
But actualmente tenemos trescientos cuarenta y tres para Norwalk.
Give or take, yes, yes.
Fuera del instituto, al otro instituto hay una facilidad.
Correct. Little bit. So, again, seven million from the city. Would you say, if I asked any of you if this is an unrealistic ask, two point seven eight percent, given the fact that we receive less than a half a percent in the last five years, I'm sure most people would say no. So again, this incorporates the transportation. I told the mayor we could pay the transportation again and come up with five point six million dollars in funding, uh, and, and, I'm finding, there's also been other proposals that we pull out covering the seven million dollars that can be paid directly. Um, and they can take it from our roles, but they can pay for nurses. And the health department, I don't think that's our responsibility, that's a public health issue. I think they should have the responsibility of paying for school nurses. And I've also said that five point six million would be the exact amount to cover our security stack. That should be a public safety, uh, responsibility, not the school's responsibility. These are some of the things that have been thrown on the table to see what they've got. Questions? I should be questioning.
Not sure.
So, obviously, if we got the seven million dollars from the city, two point seven eight percent, this would still in a six-year cycle only average out point eight seven percent. So as you know, every cost in this district is increasing, just when you see the collective, collective bargaining percentage by at least two. So I don't think it's unrealistic that in the next couple of years, we can get the total contribution from the city to increase, maybe over a six to eight year cycle percent. That would be unrealistic. Um, the increase from the state, two point nine eight percent, I think it's, it's, it's a fair ask. However, as you can see, what if, what more can the state do? They could do a little bit more to try to give us an equal footing with our, however, if they don't see the city contributing, there's not gonna be much incentive for the state to come in to get to, you know, an eighty percent contribution of the Bridgeport Board of Education. Questions? Yes, sir. Well, I'm not sure what the mayor can do if the city council commits monies to, to education. I think that is the important body, and just, just to give everyone, we have one city, this is my second one in the last week, we have one city council member in attendance today, uh, Mr. Michael DeFlippo, who is sitting, now you're the only chair of the budget committee, so they gotta come up with something. Um, no one else from the city council has, has attended other than Mr. DeFlippo tonight, so I think that says a lot, his commitment. I know him and I have had a couple of discussions. Uh, he has small children, he has a young family, education is important to him. Uh, so that is, that's a good start. It's, it's nice to see that he is here and he's taking notes. First time I've seen that. He's here a long time. So what is the operating budget fund? So as you can see, um, district office, which is ninety-two full-time employees, so that is not ninety-two administrators, that includes every department at central office, that includes payroll, benefit, human resources. Uh, ESL bilingual, world language department, which has over forty-two hundred students, is a department of three. Uh, that's the performing arts and visual arts department. We have a department of one, Mr. Alicia Robinson, who is here. Uh, that funds principals, assistants, school clerics, teaching, adult development, special education pares, special ed services such as support services, psychology, social work, speech and language, orthology, occupational therapy, guidance centers, which is shrinking year after year, as you can see. That funds our athletic program at the high school and our, at our middle school, nursing and security office, transportation, legal service, uh, the twenty dollars to the people that goes to the, in the operating budget, curriculum renewal, high school summer school, which may also credit, credit recovery, special ed ESY, uh, adult education, there's a contribution from the board of ed, that can get a reimbursement from the state. So this, this is, this is what it entails. Yes, sir. At some point, the question was if the city, the city gave that back to us a few years ago. So they are no longer doing that, and according to them, not only did they give the nurses back, they gave the funding for the nurses. Unfortunately, they gave the funding that covered the nurses in full that one year as nursing, the cost of, of payroll benefits, um, have increased, the funding has not increased with. So, again, this is our, our per pupil expenditure. This is our nerve right here. We lag behind significantly. If we receive even, uh, two thousand dollars roughly, more than Waterbury does, you do the math, that would be a pretty good start. This slide kind of gives you a breakdown of how we operate what we spend. Uh, you would think that we would spend more on instruction, but because of the high cost to employee folks, we need salary benefits, that gets up seven percent. Twenty-two percent is spent on instruction. Instructional support, as you can see, is about five percent. Spells the whole story here. Our health insurance is fifty-nine point two billion dollars. So, this is some of our curriculum renewal. As you can see, we're cutting some areas, which allows us to, uh, on a money that is going to migrate to that solution, the our six-year cycle, the four-year one, and all our people on there. We're not spending a whole hell of a lot on, and I hate to say it that way, on instruction, but when we hear strat, this is, this is the first thing that pays attention. So again, this puts us kind of a summary. We are one fifty-seven out of one sixty-six. Obviously, we're not at the bottom, but if we were at the bottom, I don't know how much more we could take, uh, in terms of budget reduction. Five-year cycle, one percent, which is a good. You know, when you read the articles such as, uh, the one a few weeks ago where Stratford presented their budget, there was an increase in their budget of a little over three mil- uh, three percent in their ask, and that would bring new programs and new services to the district. We're just asking mainly what we have. It would be nice in the future to be able to request a percentage increase and bring back some of the programs and services that we know are needed. So I just wanna go back because it was mentioned by a gentleman, um, last week, that we need to grab people's attention. So, obviously, cutting two hundred and forty-three positions over the course of four years, significant cuts when it comes to support for our, our most vulnerable students, our kindergarten students for the first year in school, which you want them to get off to a positive start in their academic careers. Um, you know, I, I always had this, this, uh, saying in my office when I was at the high school, that kids don't drop out of high school, uh, they drop out in kindergarten. They just officially do it. So these are, it's true, these are our most vulnerable students, that didn't happen yet. We lost homeschool four days, we wanted to engage our parents in our community, that had no end. We lost all our instructional support, English, reading, and math. No end. We've lost our administration, of course, people feel as if, alright, they're high-paid people, we don't need them, but those are the folks that evaluate our teachers, that go into our classroom to make sure that instruction is of high quality and rigor. So all these things add no end. So at some point, we have to make a decision if further reductions are needed. Now, we're gonna finally grab some people's attention. So, again, I'm not gonna reveal what those things could be. Uh, we're way too early in the year to, to bring people to an anxiety level that they could be unemployed or, or redeployed, but obviously, all these things that affect teaching and learning and some other academic supports didn't have any impact on city or state government. So, Tasha has a question.
So my question is, is that what is the realistic number that I know what's the, what you're asking for? But let's be real, let's say, what is the actual number you need to bring back the pares, the literacy and math coaches, the, the meat, the meat to the district?
Okay, so if you prioritize, since you said kindergarten pares, you said the coaches.
We're talking about twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
We're talking about the district.
Forty-four. Forty-four. Forty-four coaches, figure about, with salary and benefits, if you wanna do the math, say anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand, because usually the coaches are not first or second-year teachers at the bottom of the pay scale. They'll be somewhere in the middle to high end. If they're at the higher end, you're gonna look at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars per person with salary and benefits. You go a little bit lower, so just say at an average, a hundred and ten thousand. So. So.
Multiply by high school.
Right, multiply by forty-four, so you're at four and a half million dollars for the coach. Uh, kindergarten parents with benefits, figure about fifty-five to sixty thousand, multiply by, say, fifty, so you're at another two and a half million. Uh, my home school coordinator's thrown in there too, throw another one and a half million in.
What I want is a realistic number, we have lost the meat in this district.
So to get the meat back and maintain what we currently have, the realistic number would be upwards of about twenty million dollars. The exact dollar amount that Hartford gets from the city of Hartford that we don't get from the city of Richmond. Because the state, as I said, we can ask, we can hope, but I think when you're contributing that significant of an amount, and you don't see an increased commitment from the city's side, there is no motivation for Hartford to do that. Yes, Ms. Rayboz?
Yes. Estoy mirando también que en el dos mil siete, dieciocho hubo un importe de nueve familias resorcentes. So yo se producto, lo digo con mucho orgullo, de los familias resorcentes en este district, porque es como eso en este district. Pero sabe la posibilidad que por lo menos podamos regresar uno o dos de estos familias resorcentes para que sigan poderando a los papás.
So even if that we've lost, you know, the eighteen-nine or family resource mentorship now, is there any possibility that we have that statement that we have to start preparing that is a product of that, involved in quick family resources to create one or two of those employees that is in the next budget or?
Not right now, no. Not with the current ask. But, but here's the thing, when you lose personnel, things will eventually not get done. Uh, I think that's a critical point, because there's this idea that people will do more with less. Unfortunately, we have enough responsibilities for people to do with their current positions, cannot continue to cut and expect principals to do more, assistant principals to do more, district folks to do more. I mean, without these folks here, there's no one to do that work. There's just not. And that's critical. We don't have curriculum folks at the district level. At some point, how is that going to get done? I've gotten asked from the teachers' unit, who is going to be responsible for that? It's going to have to fall upon teachers. But that's not my responsibility, you have to pay me. So at some point, we are at a, at a tipping point that our kids cannot continue to go without, because that's what's happening. Mr. Davies, question?
Do you have a sense of how many teachers will leave each year, leave for better paying teacher guys?
So we do, we try to do exit interviews from, uh, district perspective on those that leave. Um, we usually hire between attrition and people leaving around a hundred and twenty, upwards of some years, a hundred and fifty. Many will say it's for different reasons, but, um, we know that pay and, and working environment are the two main reasons why people. When Norwalk will pay you upwards of twenty thousand dollars more a year, every year, and you are a sixth or seventh-year teacher, if you can make twenty thousand dollars more a year over the course of a thirty-five-year career, that's real money that you'll never get back. Uh, at the end of this teacher's contract, which is a four-year contract, Top Step with a six-year degree will finally hit six figures, just barely. Now, teachers in Norwalk now, at Top Step, make upwards of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. You know, some folks have asked me, um, there's a Bridgeport guy, friend of mine, who works down in Norwalk, you should bring him back, he'd be great as part of your central office now. As a principal of a middle school in Norwalk, he makes thirty-four thousand dollars more than our, our high school principal, our top-grade high school principal. Why would he come back here? So, we want to keep teachers, we want to recruit teachers, yet we don't have the means to do it. So the ones that are here, here because they're dedicated, they're here because they love it, uh, because many of them could go at, at any time, but they care about our kids and they want to be here in Richmond. So I, I'm happy that we're trying to get them to at least a competitive salary, but this is going to be a continuous problem. Because without those one hundred and thirty teachers leaving every year, or replenishing So, we're asking for seven. I figure if a hundred teachers leave, most of those are making fifteen to upwards of thirty thousand dollars more than a new teacher. So just figure out, if we didn't have those teachers leave to replenish them with beginning teachers, how much more of this number, how much more, we'd be closer to that number. We also have the, the factor of not being able to fill shortage areas. So we have substitutes in shortage areas because we can't find those teachers, so subs are filling in. So as a kid in a classroom with a sub in a math or science class, uh, because we can't find a math or science teacher, or a special ed teacher, that number, again, would increase if we were able to fill those rooms. So when, when you start looking at the budget and what we're asking for, uh, we're just asking for a fair share, that doesn't even begin to address all the deficits. That's why I think over time, that average needs to get up near two or three percent when you start getting into year seven and eight. So if we got this number this year, 2.78%, 2.78% next year, 2.78% the following year, we may be able to start at least providing students, all students with what they're, what they're entitled to under the law. Well, so we got a question, what can we do? What we, what can we do? Well, right now, I think it's important that when you have conversations with, you know, city officials, uh, which means city council, uh, and those folks, I think we try to emphasize that this is important. And what we're asking for is not unreasonable, I think it's important to shed some light on the history, because I think when it goes year to year, what happened last year, what happened the year before, tends to be lost. You know, it's like, it's like a new, new budget cycle is like a new school year. Whatever happened last year, we forget about. It's over and done, but let's think about now, we can't control the past. Well, the, the past is, is out, affecting the current, so I think it's important to stay positive in the way we remind folks of what we haven't had and what we are entitled to. I also think it's important, uh, if you can, write letters, you know, start to organize, I guess. Uh, I do think that we've had some positive dialogue, myself, Ms. Seelor, CFO, with the city folks, over the last couple of weeks, we've met a couple of times, we've thrown some things out on the table, they have not been oppositional whatsoever, I think that was a surprise. Uh, apparently, the mayor has committed, since the election, two million dollars, has been using that number. Uh, that's a good start, as I said, that'll help with the transportation. Uh, I do think, obviously, if, if the, the SRO is not a big ask from the police department, since those folks will still be retained in their, their rank in the aisle, uh, and someone's going to have to respond to calls to the, to the schools, so I think that's a realistic piece. Uh, but I, I do think that if we don't get the rest, um, you know, folks are going to have to, I think, come up with a better strategy than we've done in the past. You know, parents need to be part of this, that's why I said, we've got to grab their attention in some positive way, because going to the city council meeting, the belief is the majority of folks that come out are employees of the district, and if they all left the room that night, they're probably right, the majority of folks are staying. So my thing would be encourage staff not to attend, we just let them see, fill it with parents, because those are the ones that have high impact when it comes to voting. The belief is, staff only care because it's jobs, staff don't live in Richmond, that's what the belief is, so why am I going to listen? Now, I don't think yelling and screaming is going to help at all, um, it hasn't helped in, I don't know how many years, but I do think, I do think trying to show the, the realistic.
Mike, I can tell a little story about why I retired. Doing so much with so little.
Right.
Gets to you.
Right.
It truly, truly gets to you. I mean, I'm seventy, but I mean, I'm seventy. But it really, really gets to you, you know, you see that the kids don't get what they need, and you can't do anything about it, it's frustrating.
You know, it's very frustrating, and when you have more and more reports every day of kindergarten, first and second graders that are coming to school and acting up, whether it's today, again, smacking a teacher, stabbing a teacher in the foot with a pencil, kindergarten. Now, could that be avoided if there was a paraprofessional in the room? Maybe. I can guarantee you that that child would get more attention than they would with only a teacher. Because I don't think a kid comes to school in order to do harm to their teacher, but if they're looking for attention and they're not getting it, they're going to lash out. Some will throw themselves on the floor, just like they would do at home or at the store, throw a tantrum, some may get more aggressive. Unfortunately, without those critical folks there to provide the support they need, these kids are struggling, they're in crisis. We don't have, we are the, the largest school district in the state, and we do not have an alternative program. And that doesn't mean for the bad kids, there are just certain kids that cannot function in a large comprehensive school, they need a small setting in order to function properly. Maybe they have school folk, maybe they get bullied, uh, maybe they just need something different. We don't have that opportunity, we don't have the money even to pay for someone else to run that kind of setting. You know, we used to have opportunities where, at, down at UB, at university school, we had the Ustar program years ago, and every high school, we could send fifteen students there. These were students that went there, they were not violent kids, they were just kids having a hard time. They'd go there for two marketing periods, they'd go there for maybe a year, they'd come back, they'd be well, uh, well-prepared, better adjusted, and they would be successful. Those are gone. We used to have an alternative school, kids that may be more disruptive, and as you could see, that's gone. So there's very few options. So when people say, oh, your out-of-district special ed costs are high, what other options are? Before it gets to that, there are none.
And where are the managers?
There's zero.
Zero.
So, yes?
I want to say this, but I think, you know, first of all, you know, first of all, today, this is not, we got five of our members here, we got Bobby, Seelor, Hernan, Jessica, and me, and we got staff here, great. Us, and it's like, us, we do not, cannot do this alone. We're here for support and help, you know, to be sure our kids get the better education. If we got, we got one city council, thanks for coming, but you parents have to come out. This is education for your kids, not only us to be doing everything, yes, we're going to fight, we're going to try to do the edge, we got to go to city council, we got to go to Hartford, we can do it, but you parents, who the voice outside, and come out and support us, you know, that we're going to work on, you know, it's that, like, and, um, Sandy said, you know, so many years, you know, and he did a great job, now he's back, you know, because he's the passion, but you parents have to come out, be sure you record it, be sure, leave that post there, very quickly, Twitter, parents have to come out and speak and talk about education, not only the board or the city council or staff, yeah, that's what we hear, that's what you guys work for us, but the best thing for the education for our kids, for you parents have so much power, very professional, and trust me that we can do much better for our kids.
Thank you.
I don't want to hijack the superintendent's time, but, um, we're speaking to the parents, right? I'm sorry.
We don't want to.
Okay, well, I'm going to speak as the finance chair.
There you go.
Um, as the finance chair, I would like to say that my meetings every month are quite empty. This room isn't as filled as we want it to be, but it's filled enough. My next finance committee meeting is March eleventh, room three oh five, City Hall, which is forty-five, lying in tears, six P M. I need you to be there. I have new information, I've been going to Hartford, I've been working with our delegates, I've been working with delegates from across Connecticut. They are excited to work on behalf of Bridgeport and to partner with us. But we do need, and we do need, we do need a commitment from our city leaders to provide us with a little bit more, and what we've been lacking. Um, we're not asking for much, because every school year, we get caught tremendously. Uh, so I'll say this, none of us, we're, we're one city, and we need to partner, we need to link up. So when it's time to go in front of the city council, um, we will fill that room with parents. When it's time to go to Hartford, hopefully, you will help us, fill up a bus or two to go to Hartford. Um, but we're working hard on this, um, and know that we're not giving up, because every year, it seems to be more darker and darker. This year, I'm happy, like, it's not as dark, it's not as dark, I feel like we're getting somewhere. Um, there's, might be some changes to the ECS formula, the estimated cost sharing formula, heard people across, uh, the, the state, um, talking to some, uh, you know, delegates about that, so there's new information coming out, people working hard on our behalf. It's just time to understand where we are. First thing is first, let's get what we need, and then let's advocate for what we've taken away. Mrs. Spell, let's advocate it for what we've taken away. So first, let's get what we need this year, and advocate for what we've taken away. So.
I, I do.
Right, so.
Yeah, I know, I do.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I just tell you that that is the plan, and at my finance committee meeting, I would love, in a, in a, in a positive world, if we get more money, to just put a list together of what we want to bring back eventually. Um, so just know we're being optimistic, um, and it's just going to take all of us, but this is our city, this is our children, and they're the ones suffering, so we just can't give up.
Thank you for coming out, and, uh, the next, yes, I just want to make sure if you, anyone you know that has not made it out to the first two.
Back house?
Uh, next Thursday is at six P M. at Jenny Tisdale's school.